With us set, our first person is John Claussen.
Good evening, Board. I hope you're doing well this evening. Thanks again for posting the board packets ahead of the meetings. I find that to be very valuable. I'm very busy as many of you are, and it's nice to be able to take a quick look before we get here, so thank you. I noticed that we're not returning to local schools in 2025 with our board meetings. There might be a very good reason for that. I'm not sure what that is. I didn't catch it. But I just wanted to say that I thought that was a great approach. I personally enjoyed it, to be able to come to the building and see the staff in their own building, to have the extra room to see robots, to see the band, hear the band play, and to see the nice, well-managed buildings that we have. I think it was a great way to get around the district. I think it was especially great for the parents in that locality and that have kids in that school and near those facilities to visit a board meeting they may not otherwise attend. So again, I'm not sure why we made the decision to no longer do that, but I would ask if it's possible to reconsider. It would be great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Charlie Barber?
Charlie Barber, 336 UO Street, Auburn. This is year 38 for me at East Noble High School, too. And it's been a while since I've talked to you guys. But what I wanted to share, to make sure you're all aware, though I know at least a couple of board members would be aware since they have students at the high school, is that this next week is PSAT week for us at the high school. The administration, especially since Jim Graham has left, have been trying to get everything set up, taking a look at his documents in doing so. But the fact that we on Monday will do in the morning, first period, a practice session so that they all can be online to make sure they know what they're doing with Blue Book, which is the platform that the PSAT or that College Board runs the PSAT through. So they'll know what's going on, and I apologize again this year because of some of the funding that I think Dr. Corus helped us get, that we're doing freshmen, sophomores, and juniors this year again, so that we have the depth to see the growth and also then in some ways to be able to better prepare the juniors for when they take the SAT then in the spring. So we're going to do that practice test on Monday morning during first period, and then Tuesday they go and they do their testing. As far as, oh, also today, the our digital citizenship lesson from Mrs. Jarrett was the fact of don't forget to update your computer all the time, but very importantly, they need to make sure they've updated before Monday because they won't be able to, I mean, depending on what things still need to be updated on their computer, Blue Book is not going to function correctly. Tuesday's our day.
Brett Carpenter?
Brett Carpenter. After a middle school teacher was arrested on eight counts of child abduction, Teresa Groo wrote, "The safety and well-being of our students and staff is our top priority." Well, I questioned that statement, and the reason is, is I remember when we had a state representative speak before the board, asking the board to act in caution concerning the students and remove a book that contained obscenity. Well, the board had a choice: to act in favor of the students, caution towards the students, student is a top priority, or obscenity, and obscenity won out over the students. I also remember that when the board was implementing a transgender policy, they had the opportunity to put the students as a priority and guarantee the safety of girls in sports. They wrote a terrible solid policy, which does not guarantee the safety of girls in sports. So you had woke transgender ideology, safety of girls. The woke ideology won out. I remember when a concerned member of our community filed a 9130 process to remove an explicit pornographic book from curriculum, the board had the opportunity, well-being of the students over pornography, and they voted in favor of pornography. And I could give you 10 more examples of this, but I don't have time. Now, I did some research, and I found dozens of studies with similar conclusions to this one done in 2015 by Smith and Frey, which explored, quote, "Where institutions fail to actively respond to abuse affects not only victims, but also the likelihood of repeat offenses." Their research found that when schools and institutions cover up misconduct or impose weak consequences, it creates an environment where such behavior is more likely to reoccur. Now, when you had a Southside teacher allowing transgenderism to be taught in her class, what were the consequences? When you had a teacher arrested on eight counts of child abduction, did you fire him? Did you? Did you fire that teacher? No, you didn't. The study concludes, "In contrast, strong responses, including termination and legal action, reduce the likelihood of future offenses." Now, I have yet to see any action by the board that I would consider placing the students as a top priority. If the students are actually your top priority, then why don't you put out a strong statement to all the teachers, any teacher caught teaching students inappropriate conduct will be fired immediately? That would benefit the students. Put in a transgender policy that guarantees the safety of students.
Your time is up. Sharon Carpenter?
Sharon Carpenter. I've heard that these Noble student test scores are unexpected in love. I was told that hundreds of students have left the school because of the bad things that the school teaches. I have learned that parents would rather homeschool their kids than risk what might happen to them at school. I found out that a middle school teacher was arrested for acting inappropriately towards children. I remember being taught about two lesbian moms when I was in the fourth grade. I remember being sent home from school even though I was healthy because of contact tracing. I remember having to wear a mask on the bus and at school even though I and all of my friends knew that it was ridiculous. We usually just wore the mask below our noses because the only thing the mask gave us was a rash around their faces and hurt our ears. My dad took me out of school to homeschool me in the sixth grade because the test scores showed that only 18.5% of students were proficient in math and English. I would like to go back to school, but teachers are allowed to read obscene literature to students at East Noble, and I wouldn't feel comfortable going to school knowing that I would be reading pornography or a teacher would be reading that to me, and I know my dad didn't either, that's why I'm not in school. Why would East Noble even allow that? Everyone knows that it's wrong, and it doesn't help students in any way. It's actually harmful to students, so why would you allow that? Please take out obscene literature so I and hundreds of other students can go back to school.
Listen to the students. Listen to the kids. Sad.
Board, in your packets, room minutes from September 18th meeting. You had a chance to look through those. Any questions about those?
I'll make a motion to approve the September review meeting.
Motion from Mrs. Blackman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Also in your packet were the claims from October 16th. You have a chance to read through those. Are there a few of them there? Any questions about that? For Brian you might have?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion from Mrs. Klein.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Durbin to approve the claims of October 16th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to personnel. We have some resignations as presented. You see those in front of you. There were a couple of updates from today. Those are included on here.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignations.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, a second from Dr. Janson. Resignations, no retirements, and no terminations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reassignments. We have a few reassignments moving within the buildings. That helps keep, that helps Human Resources keep track of where folks are at. Any questions about those?
I'll make a motion to accept the reassignments as written.
I'll second.
A motion from Dr. Janson, a second from Mr. TruLo to accept the reassignments as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a slate of new hires as presented. There was also a couple of additional ones there.
I'll make a motion to accept.
A motion from Mrs. Klein.
I'll second.
Second from Dr. Janson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, there are two food service assistants that are also there.
I'll make a motion to accept both of those.
All right. Both of them together. A motion from Mrs. Klein for food service assistants.
I'll second.
Mr. Anderson, is that correct?
Yep.
Second from Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did have a leave request.
I'll make a motion to accept the leave request.
A motion from Mrs. Blackman.
I'll second.
A second from Dr. Janson. All those in favor for the leave request?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our instruction. Dr. Gilmore?
We're very excited. Mr. Metter is here to introduce our football coach, Mr. Coach, our Coach Stewart, and our DTE teacher, Candy. And I'm gonna hope I get it right. Rolfing?
Rolfing.
Okay. Okay. Put an extra L in there. I'm so sorry. But you gotta start with my own. If there are two of you who come out and join him, that's great. So if we have any questions, we can ask this call, so.
Thanks for this opportunity, first of all, to introduce these two awesome people. First, Alex Stewart, our ENHS Strength and Conditioning Teacher and Varsity Football Coach. Alex Stewart is starting his first year as head coach of the East Noble Knights Football Team. Coach Stewart also serves as the Strength and Conditioning Teacher and Coordinator for East Noble High School. Currently, Coach Stewart and the East Noble Football Team are 7-1 overall, undefeated in the NE8, ranked sixth in the 4A Division, and ranked 33rd in the state of Indiana. They hope to win the NE8 Conference Championship this Friday with a win over Belmont. Coach Stewart will begin sectional play at home versus four-way Southside on Friday, October 25th. Activities Director Luke Amstutz says, "Alex has done an outstanding job meshing an existing culture of success with a new style, all while becoming a person our student athletes can look up to and who are willing to work hard for. His energy has helped all of our sports succeed this fall, and we are lucky to have him." Coach Stewart comes to East Noble with previous head coaching experience at Northwestern High School and Western High School respectively. In nine seasons as a varsity head coach, he has compiled a record of 54 and 39 overall. Coach Stewart is very active within the Indiana Football Coaches Association. He has served as the IFCA Region Director from 2021-22 and has been a member of the 4A Rating Board and All-State Committee since 2020. Coach Stewart had various assistant coaching roles from 2011 to 2014 before becoming a head football coach. He began his coaching career at the University of Tennessee, serving as a Strength and Conditioning Intern Coach for the football team. He then spent time as a assistant varsity football coach at Northwestern and Richmond High Schools. While at Richmond, Coach Stewart also served as the Head Strength and Conditioning Coach. Uh, Co- ooh, sorry, iPad. Coach Stewart is a 2006 graduate of Carroll High School in Flora, where he was a two-time IFCA First Team All-State Selection. He earned a football scholarship to Georgetown College in Kentucky, where he was a four-year letter winner, serving as team captain and earning all-conference honors as a senior, while at Georgetown, he was part of two Mid-South Conference Championships and the NAIA National Playoff Teams. He earned his bachelor's degree in exercise science from Georgetown College and his master's degree in education from Indiana Wesleyan University. Coach Stewart and his wife Rachel have three daughters, Savannah, Sophie, and Sadie. Aside from coaching football, he's an avid fan of the Indianapolis Colts and loves to watch college football. In his downtime, he enjoys spending time with his family, going to the lake, and lifting weights. Coach Stewart.
Anybody have any questions or anyone who wants to say something?
How's it going?
Outstanding.
Are you a fan of Coach Sig?
Who?
Sig Ed, are you?
Yes, yes, I am. Yes, I am.
So I saw him the other day, and he's like you. He's, well, you're basically undefeated. He's undefeated. He's like, this is the best place ever.
Yeah.
And he knows he can change in a second.
Absolutely.
At the same time, we're happy you're here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It all was kind of a shock this year. It's a good shock this year, I think.
Well, I wasn't shocked because I got to work with him in the spring, and I saw his potential, and he's having a great year for us, and we're excited to have him back next year as well.
He's a great kid.
I love him.
Yes. How are your classes in school going?
Great.
You have my student, what's your enrollment in your classes?
Um, well, I co-teach two periods because we have, the enrollment is fairly high in those classes. And then, so average, I would say 25 to 30 kids per class, but then the two classes that I have that I co-teach are like 48 with being the other teacher. So they're going fantastic.
Do you have a fantasy football team?
I don't. I don't.
I was wondering if I should play my homes.
I think that's a safe bet.
All right. Next, we've got Katie Rolfing, East Noble High School Theater Teacher and Musical Director. Kathryn Katie Rolfing brings 16 years of diverse on-and-off-stage theater experience to her role as Theater Teacher and Musical Director at East Noble High School. A summa cum laude graduate of the University of Indianapolis. She holds dual degrees in theater education and secondary education. Katie has taught both theater and English courses across multiple high school settings, consistently inspiring students through her dynamic teaching. At East Noble High School, she will teach music theater, technical arts, theater arts, and unified theater. Katie has directed award-winning youth theater workshops and productions, earning national recognition from the Kennedy Center American College Theater Festival. With expertise in managing scene shops and leading theatrical productions, Katie is deeply committed to fostering creativity, confidence, and collaboration, and ensuring her students flourish both in performance and behind the scenes. East Noble is looking forward to Katie's directing debut with the musical Grease, which will host four performances in November, starting on the 21st. It's Katie Rolfing.
Any questions for Katie? I mean, what's your favorite performance that you were in?
That I was personally in as an actor. I love shows that love to tell a message, and especially part of why we're doing Pippin in the Spring is a big message. But so my favorite is probably my first show in college. I did the show Cabaret. And that show sends a very deep message about World War II. And I really enjoyed not only being able to get my first start in a professional-style world, but in a show that was so close to my heart about such a strong message. And my family's very Germans, and I got to sing a whole entire song straight in German. So it was very special to meet my family.
What's your lineup this year?
Okay, so we got, we obviously just finished Razor Ruckus, which went fabulously.
Did you enjoy that?
I did very much.
A lot of tradition here.
Yeah, I was very excited and working on that. We got obviously Grease coming up in November. We'd also just, actually just today, got Thespian's back up and running. So we just got that started, so we are excited to be able to induct those students into our society soon. As for the winter, we're doing an evening of one-acts to be able to really let our kids do multiple things and try, and even students maybe want to try for the first time, and then, of course, Pippin in the Spring.
How young were you when you started your career?
Yours? I started very young. I started theater at the age of five. Then I took a couple of years' break and then got back into it and pretty much dove headfirst. Glad I didn't hit the bottom of the pool, but dove in headfirst. But since then, doing everything I needed to do in learning about acting, directing, stage management, tech, design, everything involved. But I found out what made me the most happy was teaching students how to do those things and seeing them succeed. That's what made me the happiest in the theater world, so that's why I'm here.
Your stagecraft class?
Yes, I have two different stagecraft classes. They're called Technical Theater, and then we'll have, I have two every semester, I think next semester, last school semester, so sorry, trimesters. So next trimester, I have three, but then I have two each. Both of them right now having, I have one class that's got 12 and another class that's got 14.
Is enrollment where you want to see it for those, or is it going to grow?
Uh, I would love to see the program grow with all the classes. That's part of why I kind of chose Grease as my first show. It's a big show. It's a name that a lot of people know to help kind of get that theater bug going and get some more students involved. I would love to have as many as possible. Actually, in Grease, we have 46 students on stage acting in that production, which is amazing to see. So instead of hoping to get those numbers up, but I mean, also it can't really be easy to direct and build with 40 kids in a stagecraft class either.
Well, I'm selfishly excited to hear that you are and have done the technical side of theater as well. I, my youngest is, looking forward to doing that, and I'm excited that you'll be able to teach her some.
Very excited to work there. Already got her, already got her form.
Excellent. Excellent. So looking forward to the, to the year.
Congratulations. You have two theater along up here, so, you know, it's very exciting to have you on board.
I'm gonna take this to the business. Mr. Leach?
Actually, the first one is mine. It is the board calendar.
I'm sorry.
That we have brought back. We had a discussion a couple of months ago about it and bringing it back. Everything has, all the changes have been made. And just remember that we did change the August 6th one to August 5th, which is now a Tuesday, which is out of the ordinary. And we brought them all back to the boardroom. If you remember that discussion that we had, it was because we're preparing to go live. We can't do that as we're trying to set up equipment and move to numerous of different locations. So that's what the big TVs are about. We're trying to get that prepared so that we can better serve our community and just capacity. We know that we're still going to have presentations by each one of the schools come in, but it's very difficult for us to do a travel and show and record it and get all these presentations and move it out, and make sure it's high-quality so people can listen to it. So with that, we're asking that you approve the calendar for the 2025 year as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2025 school calendar, reading times and dates.
A motion from Mrs. Blackman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right. Request proposal for our E-Rates.
Yes. Board, in your packet, you received a four, our list of four projects that we'd like to send to our RFP, or request for proposals. These are E-Rate category-type projects, meaning that 70% of the funding will come from the E-Rates program, which is a funding source where money is, comes from utilities and so forth. Certain percentage of everyone's bill goes into this E-Rate program that is sent out through a federal funding program, whereas our discount percentage is 70%, so we'll pay 30% of the services that are provided in each of these four categories. The first category that we have sent our RFP out is to establish internet and fiber connection to our new Alternative Learning Center, which is our new East Noble Academy, 205 Bryan's Place. The second one would allow us to receive bids for 4000 equipment support and maintenance. The third one would be to provide upgraded and new network switches for our East Noble Middle School. And the fourth one would provide network switches for East Noble High School. In order to maintain a strong network from a technology standpoint, technology changes so fast, and most, most of the time, it's updated before it even ever hits the shop. So these are programs that we do rotate through, as customary and standard as we have done in the past many years. So as presented, I would ask that you approve us to go ahead and advertise and seek request proposals for these four projects.
I'll make a motion to accept as you just discussed.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Dr. Janson, a second from Mrs. Klein to approve the request proposals for the E-Rate for those four projects. A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda, board, is to adopt the 2025 budget. Last month's meeting, we had the public hearing and laid out the dollar amounts or totals for each of the four funds. The Debt Service Fund of $1,788,488. The Referendum Debt Fund at $3,163,000. The Education Fund at $28,777,058. And the Operations Fund at $9,293,902. So those dollar amounts are the same that were advertised, the same that were presented in the public hearing. So now we reached the approval process. So I asked the board to approve the 2025 budget as presented, and then we will then send it off to the state and the Department of Local and Urban Finance for their review and approval, and hope to have a response back hopefully early to mid-december. So then we can hit the ground running in 2025 with, with our new budget, so.
I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the, I got, I got the 2025 budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Blackman, a second from Mr. Durbin to adopt the 2025 budget as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That goes down to the portal, and then right, that gets to the.
The B73 gateway. So then we'll move on to the resolutions to adopt both the capital projects and the bus replacement plans. Those were both advertised as the 2025 budget as well. Public hearing was held last month. So, board, I ask that you adopt both the bus replacement plan and the capital projects plan as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Dr. Janson, a second from Mrs. Klein to adopt the bus replacement plan and the capital projects plan as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And the last item on the agenda is a resolution to give to myself and the superintendent to reduce the 2025 budget as needed based on a review of the state and Department of Local and Urban Finance review process. As they go through a review, they will have questions. They may send back to me for further explanation or further information, and they also may, you know, come back with new requests to, to reduce the budgets in certain categories. If that does happen, then this resolution gives the superintendent and myself the authority to go ahead and reduce. We cannot increase. It's only to reduce. It's going to be based off of the review of the state and the DOJ.
I'll make a motion to give permission to authorize budget reductions as necessary.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. TruLo, a second from Mrs. Klein, that in the event they are directed to make budget reductions, we'll have that latitude. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our work session slash discussion items. So you want to start this, or you want to?
Actually, Brian is going to get the update.
All right. So the first item is the update on the construction of the East Noble Academy or the former Alternative Learning Center. We had a groundbreaking ceremony today that was recorded and will be given to the news media. And so far, they're, they have removed and have most of the site prep done. They have footers dug and are pouring the rest of the footers this week. We did a approval of the parking lot and the drive this morning. There were a couple of areas with porsoils that we knew about based off of the soil borings that we had done prior to, in which we had some contingency money put into the budget for some of those areas. So we weren't surprised by what we saw. We believe the contingency money will definitely cover the costs, additional costs needed to support those areas underneath the drives and in the parking lot. So it is currently on schedule. There are a couple of equipment items that they're seeing some longer lead times on, but that shouldn't, that shouldn't adjust our schedule at all. If all goes well, we'll be putting some stone down next week, and we'll have binear down for the parking lot and driveway yet this year. And they'll have it framed and dragged in before winter, so they can. and dragged in before winter, so they can continue working on throughout the later process, so, um, that's kind of what we're at right now.
Certainly, before the snow flies.
Okay, next one, boardroom camera update.
Yeah, so have you noticed the, the larger TVs? If you look on the ceiling, you'll see some speakers, there are a couple of microphones up here, so we're in a little bit of construction, uh, process, installation, uh, program, uh, right now, uh, here for this, this room. Not only is this our boardroom, it's also our trading area. Uh, we'll have additional TVs, one back underneath the clock where you see those, uh, twelve-by-twelve tiles. Uh, we'll have one, uh, beyond the wall that will all be synced and working together, so it'll provide a more visual, uh, for not only the board, but also, uh, those in attendance. Uh, we will have, uh, at least seven microphones up here that will be hooked into the speakers, it will provide more audio for those in attendance as well. Um, and we'll have a couple of cameras where we can, uh, then, uh, record and be prepared to livestream, uh, July 1 of 2025, so, um, there's still a lot of work to be done, it's being done in phases, so you don't interrupt, uh, addition or current meetings and so forth scheduled, um, so there's, there's still quite a bit to do, you have the, this is a working process.
Board, any questions, comments about that, or discussion?
I know there was a comment earlier from John about, you know, why we're not moving, and we did have some frugal conversation, I thought, on that, and, because I think most of us felt there was a need to do that too, but hopefully understand why that seems.
I'd like to talk to you about it later.
Sure.
Thank you, Doug.
Anything else?
I'll question.
Those two. I'm just excited about getting the upgrade, so, especially with the TV, it's what we've been having issues with constantly, so it's kind of nice to have one support.
All right, late items.
I have no late items.
Comments from the superintendent?
How have you, as always? Um, just want to thank, uh, Coach Stewart and, uh, Katie for being here and introducing yourselves and, um, letting us have some conversation with you and get to know you a little bit, so I appreciate that. We look forward to continued stellar football program and, um, outstanding theater performances that we know that we can do that, so thank you, appreciate that. Um, we have, um, the state has made some major changes in, um, the reading requirements in I Read Three, and so, um, East Noble is hosting, uh, next week, uh, with my, Dr. Chorus, an I Read Three parent meeting, which is at five-thirty at the Transportation and Technology Center on Thursday. Um, and I would just strongly encourage any parent or anyone that you know, share that information with them if they're K through three, because it's really important information that we want to make sure that everyone has all of the information and, and they don't go into this blindly. Um, and Dr. Chorus will bring that back. Uh, we will have, we're on the agenda probably for the December meeting. We already have several things scheduled for November, so it'll probably be in December we're bringing that back. Um, also, I want to remind the board, um, on October twenty-second, next Tuesday, we will be hosting the State of the Corporation address at the middle school cafeteria at six o'clock. Um, attendees, um, will be updated on finances, academics, the strategic plan, and then we're also going to prove, provide, um, STEM or STEAM demonstrations, because the A is there, and we do have something for the A, so we're real excited about sharing that, but, um, they will all be there, and the last twenty minutes will be just, um, a walk-around and an opportunity for attendees to talk to those that are doing, uh, just a short STEAM presentation. Um, they'll be able to ask questions to, uh, the staff members or students that may be there, um, so we appreciate anybody that can be there. Um, I know a few board members, so just let me know if you're coming. Um, just really an opportunity for us to really share what we're doing, give you updates in the community, so. Um, also had a student, Justin Lower, um, one of the high school students, but he has been officially accepted into the first year of high school apprenticeship program for IT and cybersecurity, and this may sound familiar from last month, um, when we did not have his name at the time that we brought you, Damian Stark, and we wanted to make sure that we recognized, um, Justin as well, and, um, this is that same program that only very few in the state get to participate in, but we're very excited, we have not just one, but we have two of those students, so congratulations to both of these young men, and, um, I'm sure that they will go on and do very well in the program, so we're very excited about it. Um, also, one really quick reminder, we do have principal for the day coming up on October thirtieth, and we have all of our buildings covered except for one. I'm still waiting to hear back from one person, but very, very excited about allowing some people in the community to come in and just see the great things that are going on, um, because we have a lot of really good things, and we're very excited about that, so if you can be a greeter for that day, um, to just meet one of our, our, our people that are coming to be the principal for the day, we'd love to have you. So board, just let me know if you're interested. I know a few of you are already, uh, shared with me that you could do that, so appreciate that time, and we're very excited for that day, and we'll make sure that we have pictures and videos and things going out to the public, um, to show, um, those people that are participating in that, so we're very excited. Any questions? A lot of talking, thank you, appreciate it.
Board, comments or questions from you?
I'd like to give a congratulations to the girls volleyball team. They won the first round sectionals last night. We beat the Cal.
Thank you.
For the second time this season, so, uh, they'll move on to round two on Saturday at ten AM in Angola, if anybody wants to come up and, and support them, so.
Was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, Angola High School. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to mention that, uh, last month, I was able to attend with, uh, Dr. Camaro and Dr. Chorus, the, uh, Indiana School Board Association, um, annual conference. Uh, it's very educational. Uh, I like to learn, um, I, I'm partial to learning the school laws, and also was, uh, delegate for our, uh, delegate assembly, where there's one representative from every school, corporation that comes to vote on the legislative priorities that ISBA takes in and, uh, talks with the legislators, and, uh, when it's time to go to vote, um, we have people, you know, our legislators vote on, on the changes, uh, and also, um, the topic, so they rally around, and there are, uh, I believe, ten different, uh, ten new ones, uh, issues this year, or pop, well, they talked about five here, um, and the, everyone from the schools gets an opportunity to vote to accept those. Uh, oftentimes, there can be changes, uh, in, in those, uh, right then and there on the floor, uh, through, uh, discussions. Um, we also got to hear from, uh, Dr. Katie Jenner, Indiana Department of Education Secretary. Uh, she's always, uh, very encouraging, and, uh, you know, there's, there's always work to be done, um, but it's always nice to hear from the, the top dog, I guess you could, you could say, uh, from there. They're hoping to, uh, increase the budget for teacher, um, salaries there. It's all, you know, changing the formula, um, there, it's, it's, I also got to attend in Babe's Place, the president's, uh, breakfast that, that is held on the second morning, in which this year, we got to hear from three different presidents of the, their boards, and, um, at, at each had a different level of, uh, experience there, and that was kind of interesting, uh, newer year, you know, two years on their board to sixteen years on a board and in between. Um, and some are experiencing some of the same conversations that happen here, some are not, some have, uh, made it through the peaks and valleys of, of conversations, um, but it was, it was nice to sit down and talk with other board members. I did get to sit with the, uh, Indiana School Board Association Board Member of the Year. Uh, she is from Plymouth, um, and that was good conversations and lots going on in the Plymouth school system, um, but I just wanted to inform you guys, and if you, and there's workshops that you can attend, there are different time slots that we have, lots of subjects, everything was, I had to download, we had to download an app, right? And so, and everything was on there, and then I could click right on there and then look at my schedule to know, okay, these are the ones I want to go to, these are the speakers, this is all the, um, PowerPoint presentations, so it was a little different, so each night I, you know, sat, actually, before I had a chance to reread, um, and, and put down what I would like to go to, and talk with Dr. Camaro and Dr. Chorus at, uh, in the mornings or in the, at lunch, we had an opportunity to sit down and what they had done and, and gone, so if, if any of you ever have an opportunity to go and, and do that, I know you're finished, um, but it is well worth, worth your time to go and just talk with other, uh, board members and what they're going through. There are some in there, uh, elections, uh, up for reelection, um, and, and others who have been on a long time and, and others who have just finished their second, second year, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, there will be no executive session tonight, um, nothing to discuss with board personnel or anything, so our next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, November twentieth, that'll be getting, beginning at six o'clock PM here at this administration office. Again, thank you for coming tonight, and this meeting is now adjourned.